Virtual.
Virtual.
No calories of the person.
Seeing what, seeing all their lovely faces.
No, no.
What are you gonna do? Somebody in the mini private, I should get all the stuff. And you're lucky they have. Jeremiah, could you give us a full table of updates for every one of these years?
Oh.
Because I think that it turns to me. Thanks.
No. Really happy to see most of it out there.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, that's.
Okay. Yeah, I love it. Our rate is a little past five thirty, so we will begin our Adrian City Commission work study session for September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Roll call please. Mayor Hee, present.
Commissioner Help.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss. Absent. All commissioners present with the exception of Commissioner Gauss.
This time I will turn it over to City Administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item for discussion light is proposal to rename the city's street, Caesar Chavez. Then we then brought this to somewhere.
Same.
Uh, who I believe is gonna present on this. Go ahead, Ben.
Sure.
Uh, got a graphic up that, um, yeah, also they, uh-oh, it's turned the wrong way now.
Broken.
It can turn that back to the other orientation. North is off.
Uh, yeah, go ahead, Ben.
Well, I was gonna give a brief update on how we got here. So, so we, uh, under Mayor Jacobson, uh, we talked about street names and, uh, you know, that process, what that looks like. And so, uh, kinda got, got lost in the trouble a little bit over the last couple of years till we got the process and when we decided to go to Memorial Road route instead of actually changing the names of the roads and folks are used to their addresses. So, um, you know, fast forward to now and, 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 and light up standing here come on. I've had some individuals reach out and, and, uh, you know, kind of push us to the finish line. So I'll let Ben kind of talk about what Caesar Chavez, like, you know, what he did for Adrian and what he's done for people that he represents and kind of give a background on that.
Sure. Well, thank you. First of all, thank you all very much. Greg and I were talking about this. I don't know, Greg, uh, four or five months ago.
Yeah.
In your office and thank you for that. That's really cool. We brought the map. We're doing some thinking about where it would be. Near as we can pick, um, that Gulf Street, uh, area of the city of Adrian from the folks that had anything to do with that's our Chavez. And by that, I mean, um, Leon, Mrs. Hyder, the principals and the friends here on the farmer who, um, they were okay um, that that would be considered the ideal location to have memorial sign on Gulf Street right at the corner of Beecher and Gulf where Veronica's, uh, Mexican food store is. And the, the history behind it obviously is, is that he, he praised us with his presence here uh, after he saw the efforts of, uh, those that were working with the, uh, Adrian uh, friends of the farmer and our migrant workers. Um, out of one hundred percent transparency, my own uncle Benjamin Negron worked with that's our Chavez, albeit in California uh, along with his little respect up uh, and helping to, uh, work through some of the challenges the tabting unions and rights and those things. So I thought that, you know, maybe it was the right time, uh, to consider coming back and asking the city uh, if it would be possible to honor primarily those that have been working so hard in this community for fifty years plus. And that would be Guadalupe uh, and Maggie Belion whom says our grace in their home, as we all know. And Steve and Heather Hyder who, Mr. Belion admonished me to say that you, nothing that we didn't bring Steve on. So I honor that. And what I'm looking to do is find a way to honor those families and the Adrian friends of the farmers by establishing a memorial name change to the, not the street name. Um, in that location, the hope is that we will once again memorialize the hard work that's been done in this community by and through the sweat and tears of our migrant workers. Um, I did give some background about why it's that neck of the woods. It's not clear, uh, even from historians, specifically what parts of the city you walk on. But a great majority of the, uh, folks that are kind of the patriarchs of that time agree that it would be good to have it in that location. It receives a tremendous amount of migrant workers as customers too. Uh, Veronica's among a whole host of others, which I I hope many of you that walked in there and bought some good, if not, I encourage you to do some. Um, but it would be quite an honor to be able to say, hey, uh, go to Veronica's, it's on the corner of Beecher and San Chavez Avenue, right? I mean, that was kind of the dream. So I contacted the Hyder family. They're okay with it. I talked to Stevie, uh, who doesn't live in town, but willing to come here. We do have support from everybody from Joe Bolino to I'm just awkward, Eric, a few weeks ago, uh, and possibly if this happened to your help. Invite someone from the Says Our Child is Foundation owned by his son. Represent the family when we do this. That's what I'm working on with the new commission project. So I hope that goes to answer some questions. I was kind of high rock, but that's what I've been working on.
I, I have the question. So is it a memorial and there's going to be a sign or are we actually proposing to change the road name?
We learned after working with, uh, with Greg Elliott, uh, that that name change, physical address change would be almost insurmountable. We'd be asking residents and businesses to change their address. But he did mention and, and, uh, we've been thinking about, and I think it's doable just based on what the city can do kind of quickly, if you will. It is a memorial name change. You have the means, you have the I don't know, back here.
We do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to be sure because you, you had just said, you know, go to Veronica's on the corner of Gulf.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying that if I can see myself having a conversation with an out of towner. And that's how I would describe it.
Okay.
I like that. I like the memorial idea. But.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, have we, we talked to the post offices. It's like a
uh, well, it's kind of an additional name. I, I've seen them in other places and maybe Matt, uh,
It's kind of similar.
With it as well, probably where you put a sign on top, you know. From Beecher at that, that was the memorial name. I, I mean, I did, as long as we were talking about it, prepare a graphic of uh, the length, uh, basically the length of Gulf Street. Gulf Street's an odd name for a street in this town since we have no golf, but you know, there's that too, but uh, and so the, the blue boxes are properties that would have a Gulf Street address, but they don't use it. They have a different handling address. Only the red boxes that you see there are properties that actually have their address on Gulf Street. So there's four of them. That, uh, yeah, so some, you know, I, I mean, depends on how, which direction you want to go with this, but it, it would be something you could get your arms around. I think three of those are residential properties and the fourth one is surrounding the house, which is a but basically we're asking them to comply. Well, if, if we if we change the name, they would have, you know, they would have a new memory for us. We actually changed the name of the street. But if you just add a memorial name, that won't start to do it.
But then initially, I mean, either way we would put up a sign that would say there are more of a memorial. Oh, there's something memorial.
Ma'am, have you seen those before?
I have, but it's, it's been a while. Um, the, we can put them on our own street signs just similar to what we have now. Just put it lower. Um, so it could say on the post, it could say, um, Beecher Gulf Street, and then also the same direction as Gulf Street would be Caesar Chavez over or Caesar Chavez Street.
And if we were to, if this was to go by the next meeting to be voted, would you be able to get, how fast can you get the signs done? So would it be up before October fifteenth?
Uh, we could get done before.
So I like the idea. Okay. Don't get me wrong. But did we ever establish any guidelines as far as? Okay, we're citing a precedent here. We're doing something. Do we have guidelines moving forward for the next group that wants to have Memorial Street?
Uh, the answer to that is no. You, that, that topic came up years ago when there was the discussion of naming an alleyway. And, uh, then Commissioner Watson, uh, took the initiative to develop a policy about that. But that policy specifically does not include streets. It includes public places, uh, such as alleys and waters, do not include streets. Obviously, over time, streets have been renamed in this town. They're not all of the same names that they used to have. Bridgely Incorporated, uh, so it's happened from time to time and it happens everywhere. But if, you know, the, as to the question is the policy.
Well, I remember we had some discussion. I just didn't remember all it was supposed to sound. And, but I think that moving forward, there should be something, some sort of guideline.
Yeah, you're right. But the reason I'm okay with this is only because we've been talking about it for about five years. I'm in we're going to need to leave and then Chuck was kind of, but then I maybe stopped because we were talking about changing we're adding tires to that. That's the road that initially we thought about honoring him there, there. So um, but I think you're right. I think that, you know, since it's long that we should maybe go forward with this, but then, I then established a process moving forward. So in case somebody wants to name a street after me.
Yeah, I know. That's exactly what I was saying.
If we, if we have it like Matt said, where it's Gulf Street and then in parentheses or something, either has Memorial Street. Um, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have to change anything, the rest of the business. So I, I don't.
And the family members that I spoke to, by the way, were more in line with doing what memorializes does a Chavez necessarily having to be a physical. And with them first before, you know, asking questions. And, and I think if they're happy with it, then a great majority of our Latino and Hispanic demographic would be happy. But as many of them look to those patriarchs for, for guidance and and answers to some of these questions, they're out there. I wouldn't, you know, this is a wonder if, like a piece of old to say, if it's something decided that it's doable, could we do kind of a ribbon cutting ceremony where we highlight the Belion, the Hyders and Adrian and friends of the farmer? Because in that way, we really truly are honoring the people that have been working so hard over the last fifty years. I mean, half of the migrant workers.
Yeah, recently, uh, part of Beecher Street was uh, memorialized for Bobby Wood. And there was a real nice ceremony for that. And I don't know why we couldn't do the same thing. Great.
Again, get a policy going afterwards. Uh, let's get this going through as best best we can do, but we'll look at a policy later so that we can head off streets.
We looked at a few of them and, um, it hasn't been established. I can't find any that, that supports that he walked in Sunnyside. But we do know that Sunnyside was Bakalonia long before Sunnyside, that that's where our migrant workers came to from, you know, primarily from listening to start with. Uh, when Peter began his manufacturing efforts many, many years ago. And so they left the fields to come work in the factories. And the only place they could live at the time was Bakalonia. So it's close enough to Gulf Street where we would be honoring that whole community if we, if we ever do something.
Do you know the date that he was here?
I don't. I know, um, I call he doesn't know he'd get that for his A S P.
I just, I was just curious.
And I don't.
No, I don't. A little, well, I, it was a minute ago.
Me too. I didn't even know about my uncle's involvement until about five years ago, when he actually moved Plum Jackson to North Carolina and were moving stuff in boxes and stuff. And there are some pictures that showed up with him, you know, I would have been behind and that's when I became at the time just kind of more obviously interested in it than it was trying to make something happen.
Well, if there's nothing else on that, then we'll give them appropriate resolution prepared for next year, which is back of October. It's pretty important. All right, number two, uh, ongoing discussions regarding alcohol and pool. I feel Mr. Davies here. Tell you where we're at. I don't know. Thinking about.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Uh, wanted to obviously give you an update, um, but as I kind of lead into this, wanted to kind of recap our last two discussions of regarding. So you remember June fifth, uh, Councilman Hunsucker came presented, um, in the pre-meeting, um, from that, just a few bullet points to kind of refresh your memory. They, uh, presented a variety of options. Ice tag ranging anywhere from five to seven million dollars. One of the important pieces that came from that is with all of those options, it was clearly said, clearly stated that there would be significant, uh, operator loss. Um, with that, some other facts, they talked about a design phase that takes anywhere from nine to twelve months. When should you pick uh, whatever option that, uh, that you want to go forward with. Um, also dependent on which option that we decide to pursue, what amenities, um, and then right now we go uh, constructor could take anywhere from quality. So that was the first June fifth meeting that we had at Council Hunsucker. Uh, the following meeting, June twentieth, uh, Christian Robertson's back. So we wanted to bring her up to speed and talk about it again to give you all the handlings to, to digest kind of what you heard. Um, and one of the things that came from that meeting, um, is that the commission kind of leaned towards a, a renovation as opposed to a brand new build. Um, and really kind of pursue a phased slash incremental approach um, to this as opposed to jumping in and saying, let's, uh, go with a seventeen million dollar option and try to deal with that. So also what came from that meeting, um, besides wanting to move forward with a kind of a renovation process in these phased approach was also that a handful of you wanted us to work towards an opening for summer twenty twenty-one. So um, since then, uh, myself, um, our superintendent, uh, really my staff collectively with me, also B and B Pools, um, is a company that actually built Bone Pool way back when we've been consulted with, uh, Kriegoff, um, from a project management standpoint to really figure out how this would look, what needs to be done. One of the things that really I credit, uh, Office Manager City Schmucker with, it's helping me, is we really dived into all of the Eagle, um, the state, all the different requirements in regards to a new pool. Um, and there is a plethora of, it's a stack of machines. So we really spent a lot of time going through that. Also bouncing off ideas and questions, um, with B and B Pools and how to do this. And so next step where we want to go forward, the first thing that we need to do, and Greg and I have been discussing this, um, is we need to bring on an architecture slash engineering firm to essentially create our drawings of what we want. Very specific in what we're doing to the bathhouse, the parking lots, how the new boiler room needs to be laid out. So that's one of our third things. And we really want to kind of ask you all in regards to whether we want RFU or RFP. Greg, do you want to jump on or not with this?
Yeah, I just kind of explained. So you know, as we talked about it before, we really did, we don't want to miss a season of the pool. Uh, as we were talking to Kriegoff and others, uh, it became obvious that replacing the boiler is going to mean that we're going to have to enlarge the current mechanical room. And when we do that, in addition to needing an architect to do that, we, uh, will need a new license in Eagle. And so that implicates that licensure process with them. As soon as you change the physical facilities, um, as opposed to just replacing pieces of equipment, uh, that requires a new license. So we're told from the address.
And to piggyback on what Greg's saying, so currently, uh, within the, within the state, within the department, they are now down to one operating employee. So this one employee inspects and does every single pool campground in the state of Michigan. Um, so the current process to submit your application, if you haven't reviewed, is over a year at this point. Um, to give you some perspective, when we applied for our current twenty twenty-three pool license, Cindy filed it the first week of October. We didn't even get it until the end of May. And so she hounded them for six months, saying, you know, we're opening June. When do we get our license? And she never heard anything until early May. When this person said, it's just I have say to Michigan, we're in seven days a week. We're, we're a year behind. And that current timeline is still in place, um, in regards to, so as Greg was saying, with the new rules and regulations in regards to changing the footprint of certain pieces of public pools, there are new standards, um, within Eagle that have to be met. And one of those things of replacing the boiler is that if you've ever seen it, that room's very small and condensed. That has to be gutted and opened up to a much larger size, which obviously then changes the footprint of the pool house. So if you have been into Bone Pool, um, if you go to the, uh, the Men's Insurance Center Mail site, um, that's where it's connected to, um, the boiler room. So that's going to significantly change all that. So that's why in doing this process, we want to have an aquatics firm, design firm to come on and assist us with this. Again, they need to do the drawings and all these things have to take place in order for us to reach our end goal. Um, however, though, we can still move forward in wanting to have that twenty twenty-four season. We can move forward with a new pump replacement, a new chemical distribution system. And one of the things from the meeting that some of you voiced and it isn't even, um, many of you, if you will, are the pool deck lounges, the chairs. Um, if you've ever been there, a lot of those have been there for a very, very long time. I, I would argue and say some of those are the originals. I guess it was built in nineteen seventy-two. So these are the first step that we need to go forward, obviously from a long-term standpoint. We need to move into the design phase and have somebody come on have further discussions and meeting and presentations, but really nail down what exactly we want to do in regards to a renovation to the pool. And with that, we do want to have that twenty twenty-four season, um, which we can move forward. So just a little bit of a recap, um, we opened it this summer it's free to city of Adrian residents and or Adrian public school students. Uh, really the thought process behind that. Without having a boiler, temperature always becomes an issue. And when we made our decision, we looked at USA Swimming and a number of other aquatic groups. The optimal pool temperature for a public swimming pool is seventy degrees. For many that we had heard in early on in the season, the pool was so cold, we couldn't estimate what four hundred fifty thousand gallons it's going to do. Right? Fortunately, on average, the pool was roughly seventy-seven to seventy-nine degrees all summer. Right? So never at any time did we have a single complaint about pool temperature. The only, I wouldn't say they really complained, but if you remember, normally the wave runners use the pool in the morning. They were concerned about the temperature and ready. So, and so fortunately, with our fantastic partnership, they had a public schools, they had a public schools took the lead, got their pool cleaned, fixed, open, and allowed the wave runners to go in there. Um, but again, so we learned something, right? Um, we learned that we can't operate the pool um, without the boiler at the moment. It's an optional though. But ultimately, with the summer heat, with bodies inside getting the water moved around, water, like I said, was anywhere from seventy-seven to seventy-nine degrees. So never a single complaints in regards to temperature. So what I would propose is that part of the process moving forward is that we open up next year with a new pump um, with the new, uh, drainage filtration system or the distribution system and look to purchase new, uh, furniture for the debt. Um, but I'd also with your blessing, and we can talk about this further as we get closer, but I think it would be wise for us to implement a fee structure again. It'll be maybe free last year, it could be simply, but if the temperature is going to be a huge concern, we want to accommodate our residents. Um, one of the things, that was a little hitch that we ran into, is quite a few uh, pool users that came to the pool that were not city of Adrian residents and or Adrian public school students or families that wanted to pay, use the pool. However, we did have that policy in place. Um, that happened almost daily. And if you want to say we had any issues, those are some of our issues, um, because we had, you know, young, anywhere from sixteen to nineteen-year-olds seasonal workers working for us getting absolutely attacked by their own adults over that. And we had our pool and our pool management staff, uh, Robert Jacob did a good job of immediately trying to address the situation. But as you can imagine, you're sixteen years old, working at a pool, you have adults screaming, causing an issue. You know, and, uh, that, that was our one issue that we um, but again, I would propose from a revenue standpoint that we open next year and we include outside residents still um, at a fee structure that, that benefits our city of Adrian residents and our, of our students' families. Um, but, uh, so I'll stop right there. Do we have questions so far?
Yeah. So you would then also like get with Eagle and get that process rolling? Cause you said it's a year, about twelve month timeline on that?
Yes. And this is the importance of having a firm and an aquatics group that come on and do this. This is very extensive and this is what they do. Again, I, I want to credit my staff. Uh, we've had some long days reading through stacks of paper, really trying to understand the process. Um, so it is important and these design firms know this. This is what they do every day. They will take care of the application process for us. But this is something that we do need to start now because we want to get the application um, submitted, but we can't do that until we have our drawings, until we come together collectively and say, this is what we want the pool house renovation to be. This is what we ultimately want the pool to look like. To that.
This is more twenty twenty-four. This is what you're proposing.
This would be correct. So for twenty twenty-four, yes, one, we need to, however we do it, bring on that design firm. Um, but in addition to things that we can do at the city level, and that would be to look at a pump, look at the filtration system as well as, uh, the furniture and things that have to do. So that way we can have a season next year, which would be an ultimate goal, whatever that renovation look like would hopefully begin potentially in twenty twenty-five. Next year, it would be an ultimate goal, whatever that renovation would play, would hopefully begin potentially in twenty twenty five.
No, it's, it would still be a phase renovation project as we discussed, but. That's thing after acquiring, replacing. The critical equipment for next year, pump and the chemical equipment for next year, is to get those. In Cameron Heights sometimes, you know, sign for, we're not bored, so that we can start planning that twenty twenty five phase, which will be. Um, you know, at least enough to get us a boiler, at least enough. Renovations for pool outs, get us boiler going forward. Or intimately move into those other features that we want to have, uh, through the Congress.
So once the drawings are okay, we can actually get into construction during the summer. As the pool is open, we can still have some of those construction issues.
Well.
For the boiler? Or do we have to wait till fall to do that?
Well, that depends on how soon we can get the drawings done, it's permanent by. And so we did, sooner we started, the sooner we'll finish. And so the question becomes, now, for you is what process would you like us to use in selecting a design firm? And it's not really, a lot of times you use an RFQ process, where you just review qualifications. Uh, if you do an RFP. Now, what you're going to get is just hourly rates, because they don't know how much time the job's going to pay, we don't know what the job is, yeah. We have uh, consulting engineers that we bid out on a daily basis, and they give us hourly rates. We, but in that process, we went, I, as I recall now, we went through a two-step process, first an RFQ and then invited. Certain of the qualified firms to submit the rate.
Yeah, that's probably no, kind of true in those grades.
You know, I don't know if you want to, we don't want to delay it, I mean, more than you can, you're not required, you know, by charter. It's a service contract, so you're not required to, you know, want to be fiscally responsible, of course. And so. You know, I, I would, I would say that the most expeditious way to do it is to choose, this is a, something of a specialty as well, we had. At least one recommendation from a contractor, the firm, uh, what I would say is. Get a, get a few recommendations and invite them to bid their rates. Um, so that we don't have to go through a, uh, a lengthier process than we need to, but still, we're comparing prices, if you will. Just in terms of the hourly rates, so, we know we're getting there.
I mean, I'm okay with that, as long as we have a couple of options, I mean, I do my parking lot, I got three companies in.
Takes more time, but I think it's well worth it, yeah.
Any other questions, comments, or?
There any inspections or anything, a pump for the chemical distribution that would flag our application to Eagle to. Operate the pump, or operate the pool next year?
No, so we just actually, they actually stayed in the lower high oil department, just came in this past August. In check, so we're, we're up to date, we're good, um, with changing the pump, there is an application process for the change of equipment. Um, and that's a simple process, they essentially just wanted to notify, so it won't flag us or anything, you have it in. Upon your approval, once we move forward with the installation of a pump, we would submit that, essentially it's just notifying so that they know. When this person does get around inspecting that home, it'll be a pump, yeah, we do want to file that you have submitted the correct paperwork, so.
All makes sense to everybody, you got a point? We want to move forward accordingly. Uh, Berta, hi. Moving on a lot, special assessment policy, uh, so, you. So Matt passed down something that's at your place on the table here. Introduce it, I asked him to look at. A specific issue, and, and he created a broad policy related to special assessments, uh. To kind of memorialize what we do in general, but the specific issue I asked him to look at. You recall that when we have residential street special assessment districts. We often get a lot of people confused about the fact that we're charging them for curb and driveway applications, yeah. Many people say, well, there's nothing wrong with my driveway approach, nothing wrong with my curb, why, why am I being charged with that? For that, and then the reason is. Historically, just that we want some buy-in from the benefited properties on residential streets as opposed to. You know, collector streets or arterial streets, which are of a different character. Uh, from the people who are actually benefited by it. Uh, but there's no magic to the curb and to the driveway. And so what I'm not asked Matt to look at is just a percentage that would be assessed. Uh, that would be similar, uh, that's to kind of look at what that represented in terms of dollar value in these various special assessment districts. And then just look at a straight percentage that we could incorporate into a policy. When we do a, a special assessment district like that, we know the properties of these, this sort will be. Assess X percent of the project cost. So on, depending on, and kind of escalating depending on the intensity of the property. Uh, so that's what this does, and I'll turn it over to Matt when. Walking through the back, you know, a little bit.
That was really good, thank you. Um, so what you have in front of you is um, a proposed policy, uh, and. We, we, I kind of looked at a lot of other municipalities and what they did, um, and there's a lot of others that do this, there's a lot of others that charge. Um, full price for reconstructs for military services for all their road improvements. Um, I don't think we are at the point that we need to do that right now, I think we are, are good to just charge for, um, a portion of the reconstrut. Um, so on the uh, second page, uh, or I'll say third page. Um, we, we break it down on how each um, property is getting uh, assessed, so. A single family or duplex, um, would be assessed at a rate of fifteen percent of the total uh, project cost. So, um, and to put that into perspective, if you flip over on the backside. We've got four properties here, um, so property A, uh, is the type right there, is a hundred and forty feet of frontage. Um, so they, they'd be assessed on a hundred and forty feet of the total project cost. Uh, so it would be the property frontage, a hundred and forty, um, divided by the total, uh, project frontage. And then, uh, multiplied by the project part, we multiply that by that fifteen percent, and that would, that would get everyone. Based upon, um, how much uh, vehicular traffic they're bringing in. Um, so if you're a commercial industrial, you're probably bringing in, you're taking, um, more, uh. Uh, higher traffic volume, so, uh, we, we figured they should be assessed more. Um, there is corner lot deductions on here, if you have a corner lot, we don't feel it's fair to, uh, charge you a full hundred percent all the time, so. Um, it's discounted at twenty five percent each time, uh, your street comes up. And then if you, uh, replaced your drive approach, uh, within the last three years, you get a five percent uh, discount as well. Um, those two, I will say we've been doing as far, as long as I've been here, um, and so those have not changed, um. And then. I think, I think that's really the basis of what we were trying to nail down, um, as far as the puberty construction. It does have a lot of other items in here pertaining to storm sewer, water, sanitary sewer. Um, and street lights, um, and also option for petitioning. Um, so, I wanted to get this in front of you guys, let you guys take a look at it, and, um. Please give me your feedback, and then we can come up with a formal policy, uh, that we can present to our residents.
Obviously, you're getting us for the first time tonight, and we're just, the point is just to try to explain it to you and, uh, give it to you. Take a moment, read through and think about, uh, my asking, sorry, direction, my, uh. Uh, how to answer the question at this point.
Okay, are we able, do we provide homeowners with an idea of what the cost is before the project?
Uh, we, we send them estimates, um, the estimates are. Uh, bound to change, because we send out letters six months in advance, um, and we don't even have our bids back yet, so. Um, by the time we get bids, uh, we send out another letter saying, hey, it could be up to this much. Um, we do get a lot of phone calls and people asking, how much are we talking here? Um, so, I, I would say we try to give them the information as it comes, um, but it's just kind of hard to communicate, because there's so many different factors.
And in that letter. You let them know that this can go on their taxes for ten years.
Yes, yeah.
Not like they have to come up with whatever, the three thousand dollars.
Right, they can pay it in ten years, um, if they don't pay it, it goes on their taxes.
Yep, okay. But it doesn't go on, it'll go, it doesn't go on the summer tax, no?
No.
It does not, oh?
Only if they don't pay it.
Only if they don't pay.
So, yeah, we try to keep it all that is.
Alright.
Do you even need to give the estimate on that first letter?
Um.
Do people really need that?
We, we try to give them some sort of estimate, just so they're not sticker shocked later on, um. We actually were working on Helen Rogers in Lenoir right now, and we've sent probably. Four different letters, and we had five people today say that they didn't even know they were paying for this. And it's, it's unfortunate, but we're, we're sending as many letters as we can, trying to communicate, but, um. I, I, I don't know how to make it more clear to residents, quite honestly.
We experienced something like that.
Yeah.
Never a fun meeting, that's for sure.
But this, this at least gives us some guidance, um, and right now, it's kind of, this is what we've always been doing, now we have something in place, so.
Right. Here we go.
You guys have any other questions throughout the week, please?
We'll try to bring that back next time, yes. Uh, last item. Human relations, so there were a couple of missions from the loan that, in their packets. I think you all saw this in the email, but.
I'm glad the pencil was out, you can.
I, I like doing this, you know, walking around.
Not doing.
Also kills time, so that my time is, well, it's my risk, although the bear went on record as a great one. Well, this was the product of a committee that, well, packing up, uh, in. Chapter thirty eight of our city code deals with human rights, uh, there is an article. That is, article two that established the Human Relations Commission, uh, many years ago. The. Uh, you, through your discussions, uh, it indicated that you wanted that updated to. Provide a more relevant, uh, function for the commission, uh. Or ha- have them be of greater assistance to you as the city commission and the work that they do. And so a committee was established that involved two members of this commission, uh. Uh, Mayor Heath and Mayor Protem Help, and two members of the Human Relations Commission. Chair Bernard and Vice Chair Ramos. And we met several times to go through the language of the current ordinance. Provides the structure for the commission and propose revisions to that. This was before you, once before, you chose not to act on it at that time, but at that time, we heard. Also some comments about how the, the language about the. The scope of the mission of the HRC was outdated, and did not include most of the date language. Uh, related to categories of discrimination, and we noticed that, that had been updated in Article Three. Chapter thirty eight, related to, to discrimination, but had not ever, no one had ever gone back and updated it in. Uh, the Human Relations Commission article, and so we may, in putting this before you tonight, uh, we took it upon ourselves. Administratively then to, uh, update that language, so we just took the occasions where that. Uh, scope of, uh, protection from discrimination language occurred. And updated it, uh, to be the same, uh, in Article Three. We found that it occurred probably more times than it needed to, so also made some revisions for maybe a little bit. Less cumbersome manner, so that's what's before you. Uh. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at it, tonight's the time to discuss that, uh, see if the committee. Uh, hit its mark in terms of, uh, revisions that are proposed, or if there's other things that. Things should be addressed at this time, like, it's only on, only in front of you for discussion, we've not put it on, uh. For action, uh, if you're okay with the draft, future meeting will put on for, for an order of change.
So I, I have a couple of, uh, comments, questions. Saying where the rest of you are at, and several times in the ordinance, it talks about, so there's a couple. Uh, shall broadly representative of the community and include persons from the various ethnic, racial, and religious groups. So that's in B, and then also in under city, we're. Got one foster mutual understanding or respect among all racial, religious, and nationality groups in the city. And I believe, if I remember correctly, there's a couple more times where it really. It highlights racial, religious, nationality groups, but it doesn't. Highlight other groups that are protected. And I, I think if we're going to take a look at this. You know, if we're going to do it, let's do it right, and this is what I've said all along, um, to me, that's not. Broadly representing what we want the HRC to, to, to be, we don't want, we don't want. We don't want representatives, and I don't know that people would say, just from various ethnic, racial, and religious groups, but. Is there a different way of saying that we want people from a broad background? Without highlighting those three. That makes sense, it does, because it's not the only thing, there's several times in here that talks about it.
Can refer when you met, when you're saying, saying foster mutual understanding, respect among all. Stated above.
That's what I'm wondering, if we, if, instead of being.
All the people, right, as soon as you try to enumerate, you know, then you remove the rest of living.
And, and that's my second, that's my second comment, and I go back to my stint on planning commission when we, um. We were talking about the, uh, sidewalk cafes and the distances. That people, uh, that businesses could have their. Um, sidewalk cafes and how that would, you know, wheelchairs and ADA compliance and all of that. Where we were at three feet, four feet, and a half, five feet, um, and then I think I think you, who said. Why don't we just say, to make a compliant with the current ADA regulations? And we took out a number, so we don't have to come back every time to, if ADA changes that number, it's current. So I'm wondering if we can't do the same with the HRC Commission ordinance and state. Something more broad that says, um. And. I wrote some of it down, but I looked at the federal guidelines, the seven protected. Federal, um, groups or the Elliot Larson Act protected groups, and so we're not. We're not going to have to come back in a year from now, if whoever's here, and make another addition or a change. If we list it as just being, uh, state and federal protected classes or, um, groups. If we want to list the actual acts, um. So those were my two comments, and the, the thing, you know. Anyone else, if I haven't talked to any of you about this, I don't know what you think of that. Not that we have to make a decision tonight, but.
Well, you're going to so help on, so we can keep making the necessary. Revisions and have something. Come back meeting again, they might have to be. Like, don't try to renew it, it's all people, and and those are the ways to.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, that's for me, okay.
And, you know, when we want to say the members of the Human Relations Commission is nearly possible, shall be broadly represented of the community. And maybe we just. I do think there are some other revisions that we. We can look at, and I don't know, you know, since I wasn't on that committee, I don't know. If we, if you, like, you want me to put all of this in writing to the people that were on the committee, to Joaquin and. Uh Lady Bernard or. How do you want?
Well, no, I think the committee did its work.
And this is what initially was supposed to happen the first time, so I'm glad we're we're now and and um you know, your feedback is. You know, and. I I think that's, that's a good start, we can just kind of pick through it and kind of um gain some more public input after this.
We use state and federal well protected, you know, stated that way, does that.
Well, we're not trying to limit the composition of the of the. HRC to only people who are. But we do want to be broadly representative. The communities or include that. Then as a voice mutual understanding, obviously, the goal is. That understanding among all people.
It doesn't appear to be. Maybe too simplistic for some people, but I think that. Covers everybody, of all persons or a community or a group. Just feel like uh. That is essential, and we mentioned everyone in a very inclusive way, all persons. Or community, all groups.
The other thing that I I have, I think I. Commissioner Hope about this is number ten. Maybe seat ten, I guess, um about having a report annually before January fifteenth, so. I I don't know that. Uh Mayor, you've been on it for four years, has there ever been a report to us on the activities of the HRC?
They report to um submit budget, that's they've done, they've done it for that, to submit for. Both in time for the budget, that's why they had that report, but it was just like a. I had to report that then went along with the budget request for the next year or two, um I mean. They get their report from Nathan. You know, like of what's in that every time, and then they report.
Yeah, yeah, reports of activities. And I apologize if I I if I missed an email giving me that report for the last. Four years.
No, they haven't done it, that's why it's discussed, so that there's better communication between the city commission and the HRC, that's why that was.
So this this number ten has not taken place in, at least in the four years.
Not to the city commission, they were doing the expenditures to. You know, they were put, that was something that was between city employees, like, you know, Nathan Owen, and then submitting the budget and, yeah.
Okay, cause it says to the city commission, that's I kept going back and looking through all my emails, and I'm like. I'm just not finding any reports.
I probably did, but it's not in.
Ten has been there the whole time, we just added the words and expenditures, so I just wanted to make sure that I'm not the only one who has not received. An activities report for the last four years.
It's kind of like more so like Mike Jacobus, the Chair of the Planning Commission, he used to say, you're looking forward on their activities and what they're doing, if they need to do some. You guys are doing the zoning master plan or. Rewrite, rewrite, for all the, you know, just kind of understand their activities and what's going on, because, you know, obviously going forward, you know. Whether I'm here or not, I'm gonna still follow the HRC and like, it's nice to have, you know, an update once a year to see what the activity is over here.
I guess when I, when you said it, to me, I want to know, okay, we've accomplished this, and this is what I can get into, so when we're considering budget. We can understand what the plan is for the upcoming.
And I think with them going like quarterly and that setup with um. Meeting before the beginning of the year to set that year about what you're trying to do, that that will accomplish exactly what you're. You're saying, cause they they'll have to, because of the quarterly meetings. Set that up ahead of time, and and that is the plan, is like November. Set it for the year of what they're looking, I mean, there's going to be things that could possibly come up that you can't predict, but then they and they talk, we talked about that, but. To to have that like figured out with town halls or things like that and just submit in that report to get to that.
It's like also with the calendars, like also, so we know that not only do we know what's going, what they're doing, but also we can help support those.
Right.
Kind of have a calendar, we know like town halls.
Yep.
This quarter, this town hall, that quarter, that town hall, so we have kind of an idea, so we can help support those also.
And and I know. We don't want to drag this out, and I'm sure that the current members of the HRC don't want to drag this out, but um. I I want to do it right, I want to do it well, and. We've received, I know I've received a couple of emails about this this weekend that. Apologize with are delicious, I just have not been able to. Fully get into and say, okay, that makes sense, that makes sense, that makes sense, so um. I still think that there's more discussion needs to have. And more education, no, on my part, I need to look at it further and do some more research. The rest of you feel like you're comfortable with where it's at, then that's. I'm not ready to make this go forward at this time.
The emails that I received are still questioning, I think, purpose or direction. What we've spelled out, I think, I feel like um some of our. Community is not still. You know, sound in where we're going with this, or what is expected of the HRC, and how are they going to be supplied with what they need? Um with some of the questions I got, so. I I would like to dive into that a little bit more, I would like a little more time to look at that and study that a little bit more. Um and, but I would hate to narrow something down to. Like, so if if if, I don't want to put it, you know, here are some expectations that are relevant right now, but. In ten years are not going to be relevant or whatever, you know what I mean, so I don't want to narrow down scope, I I like a broader scope that where we can. Help where we need to help, but um it seems that people are, there's, there was still a lot of question about what what our. Intended purpose of the HRC is.
Yeah, I agree. That's number sixteen. Continuation, I think, so I'm glad that I'm I'm glad that it got brought back, because I was wondering where we were at with it. So um. To me, I think it's just a matter of. Every, I don't know if we do it every pre-meeting or once a month, we continually bring it up until we have the point where we want to. I don't know, that's odd, or do we? Meet with the. Joaquin and Bernard or other members of HRC or other. People in the community, I know I met with Irene Solis about it a couple of times, and she gave me some suggestions. So I'm just wondering if there are other people in the community that we should be bringing in too, to really take a look at this.
In our strategic plan, we discussed a communicate, someone that does communications or someone, you know, a DEI expert or something, you know, we we kind of love that. Pretty broad too, um. I don't know, that's a five-year plan, and we don't want to take five years with this, but um. I I I'm interested in how we can incorporate that into this as well. Just some, I do, I guess I'm looking for leadership. For the HRC, that seemed to be one of the big questions too, and someone that is working for the community, that's doing communications or something like that. Um might be, here's here's where we need help, or kind of lead the charge on that, does that make sense, like?
Like a point person.
Yeah, when when we're lacking purpose, here's what we need to do. Cause they're in the city, in city hall day to day, and, you know.
They don't have that person.
Right, it's in our strategic plans, look into that, so I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't want to forget it either, but I don't know that we want to put this on that far.
Right, I don't want to.
I mean, I would like to see at least it come back um the next pre-meeting and maybe the few after that, if that, if it's necessary, just so that they can. Get back up and running and get plan for like next year and 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 get that moving in that direction, and it's going to take two meetings, because it's. You know, an ordinance change, so I would like, you know, to keep revisiting. In pre-meets till everybody feels comfortable to move it on, but at least every time, and I I mean, that's my opinion, so that we can keep that moving.
And not that we want to change ordinances and vote on them, you know, all the time, but. We just have to keep in mind, we can change it and then. If maybe, if we feel like, oh, we totally missed something.
I'm happy to look at it again, I I want to say also that people who have worked on this so far have. Uh done a lot of work, and I want to work this over, I I think there's some really good changes here, and I think that. Those people should be thanked also for working on this and getting it here. Because we can can move on.
So are are we okay with giving Greg directions and to make some of the other?
Well, I I noted too that you brought up, which I thought was helpful.
That's what I'm saying, making. Other changes, or at least giving us wording to look at for the next time, yeah.
Yeah, I can make those two changes, if anybody has anything else, and. Email me about it, uh. Mind tonight, uh.
Cause I agree, I definitely agree with Commissioner Roberts on that C one about excluding groups, because we believe it was, I think, it should be all people.
Yeah, I did, I did not like that night, I didn't like it the last, you know, when we were discussing this back in July. Thanks, Greg.
I do have one thing I want to bring up, I promised a few people that I would do this. I've had three different people approach me about. Traffic on North Main Street, okay, and. After the third person talked to me, all right, I'm going to try to pay more attention to North Main, and when I say North Main. I'm talking from basically the courthouse or chomp down to like city heights. And I'm going to pay more attention to this because the complaint is about speeding. Well, as I started to pay more attention to it, I realized that I'm part of the problem. Because I think that you you have a light, or you have a stop sign at at front, you have a light at Maple. And oftentimes, people are trying to get through that light at Maple. That either way that you're coming, doesn't matter if you're going north or south. And if you, if you have. Left the stop sign going north at Chomp, and you're trying to make sure you catch that green light, you punch it. Once you punch it and made it through that green light at Maple, you're off to the races. And it works the other way too, and what I what I found that I was doing is I was doing the same thing, but I was also trying to make lane changes. Because sometimes you have trucks that are using that route too, and I don't want to get stuck behind the truck. And recently. We had one of the the signs that are out that tells, yeah, which. That was good, and I thought, maybe that's something that we could do on North Main Street. At least Dave can address this.
Sure, and uh speed is a complaint all over town, and Matt gets the same calls I get, and we have a list, basically. When we get a call, we'll add the street to the list, and then the sign will move around town based on those calls.
Cause I realized it was no longer there on Riverside.
Right, um the other issue the sign presents is that if you see the sign. Very rarely is there than a speed trap there, and people will use it to see how fast they can go, see how much they can get that sign to light up, but we have it shut off. We have it shut off when it hits ten over whatever the posted speed limit is, so let's try to eliminate that, so it's good and bad. Um when we use the sign, we have uh we have dedicated patrols almost every morning to North Main, but further north. Past Mill, around Curve there, um we we have a lot of activity there, and I've also received calls for that stretch. Um that you just described, Commissioner, and we do have cars out there, but it's. You know, when we only have two or three on at a shift, it's difficult sometimes to to get them to spend uh enough time out there to make it real bad.
You get complaints about my little street of State Street, people roar up and down that. And they do stop people, and they roar it in there.
It's very difficult to enforce. Speed limit that is less than the road is designed. People, eighty-five percent of the people will drive a reasonable speed for what the road is designed for. In fact, that's the way you set, you're supposed to set speed limits. Uh and if the state leagues do it, that's exactly what they do, they do the speed survey, and whatever eighty-five percent of people drive on that road, that's the speed limit. It and if you want to change it, you really have to change something about the design of the street, many people saw that. Either introduce curves or stops or other. Narrowing of the street, different things that make people perceive that they should go a slower speed on that street. Very, very, very hard, even with rigorous enforcement. You know, you almost have to be like. You don't go through Clinton at more than twenty-five miles an hour, because they don't have anything else to do there. Well, they're going to be waiting for you, uh but anything less than that, and. You know, people are going to take their chances, or they got the radar detector, and they think we're safe, like I say, like. The judge from the speed side that well. Waiting for me here, it's not a speed trap. If you really want to do something about speed, you have to do something.
Want to tell Commissioner Frayer to stop playing pole position? So what kind of bummer that is that, I mean, that's not, that's a.
Well, then, you know, there lies problem with North Main, because we don't have.
We don't have.
Do you have any discussions with?
No, I I, this this has been an issue for years, I'm sure you guys have all been aware, um I think one thing that would would help is. Putting a median down with fifty-two, um we have a turn lane down most of fifty-two right now, um if you put a median in. That makes your street size look that much smaller, um so it'll slow people down tremendously, um but I. I don't know when the state ever plans to do fifty-two again, um and if that's something that we would want to change, the city would probably have to front that cost.
Speed bumps and spikes are other questions.
Before that, it was Mommy and Scott, you remember all the complaints?
So we need to. Be brilliant and come up with some other idea.
And not ride with land.
Go right back to land. Because I I mean, I had it happen to me personally last week. Because I, I mean, I had it happen to me personally last week when we got some quite a testing, spied out areas coming into town and truck came right up on my bumper, you know, they were playing little Mario Kart.
They, when did they narrow down South Range? Is that why it's going like that? When it goes, where it goes to one lane? Didn't it change?
Well, it did at one point, but I don't remember when. It's where, where you can turn to go down Michigan, right by Michigan Avenue.
Then it goes to two lanes. Yeah.
Yeah.
I was learning a one-way.
That's what I was wondering.
The other questions have anything to discuss before we go to public comment?
All right, at this time, we will open it up for a public comment. We will start inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit and if you have surpassed that three-minute time limit, you will hear an alarm go off from our city committee. And for the record, please state your name and address. After we're done inside the city chambers, we will then open it up for all Zoom participants.
Or am I neat or is, can I stay seated? Um, Erin Jeter, City of Adrian resident. Um, I appreciate the conversations they've had currently. Um, and I wanted to provide some feedback on the H R C D I discussion that was, that was being had. Um, in my experience, if groups aren't specified or specifically spelled out as a protected class, it feels the same as being left out. Uh, all people are treated equal, um, but they are. Um, for about seven years, I was a part of the Adrian Composite Squadron, a chapter of Civil Air Patrol here in town. Um, as a seventeen-year-old cadet, I was brought up in front of my squadron and hazed by my squadron commander. Well, this was reported to the Cadet's Protections Officer, uh, who's in charge of all of Michigan. He said that because I was hated due to being trans, uh, that I wasn't specifically protected and nothing was done. Uh, I wasn't included in the all. My husband and I were eventually kicked out of the program due to more specifications that weren't uh, that, that weren't there involving our title.
Got Marvin, um, Adrian, I just wanted, uh, the county had, uh, two traffic officers on duty that get, get a grant according to chief and you could, uh, and I just wondered if the city get grants or officers that just, uh, targets the, to the, the county does it, why can't we do it in the city?
Just like to thank the commissioner for addressing this issue and making up the um, I did hear a couple of things that brought a couple of questions to me. And I do have the answers for you or some of the questions that you all had. I was wondering if you are willing to allow the H R C members that are left to actually meet with you and discuss it with you while you're discussing it. Instead of who I'm discussing and have the answer, but I can't answer. So I'm asking you all if we'd do that. Um, there are several questions that you offered that I do have the answer to. And am I allowed to talk to commissioners one-on-one? Because I hear a lot of you say that people are emailing you and talking to you. I don't get those emails. I do get some questions however, but I don't get those emails to know if you're receiving and suggestions that you're receiving. And then, like Keenan, I and Pat met about the bylaws. We made some changes that may address some of the issues that you're concerned about. Um, and we believe we will have an update on what we thought we were working on, uh, and that is the bylaws. So if you would give us the opportunity to even meet as a group, uh, just to reflect it among ourselves and bring ideas that we have, that we know what we've done, um, and that we can do. Because we do have ideas as well. The community has ideas and they will give it to us. Please give us the opportunity to do that in the discussion with you as well.
Ernest, homeless, and my, uh, well, concern, whatever you want to call it, is that city officers always give home people tickets and then if they can't pay it, they want to, well, they got ten days to pay. And then they don't pay it, they go to jail one more. So I don't think it's right that officers nonstop kick home people out at parks and whatnot. That's, that's what you come talking with, because they got lighthearted and whatnot. They'll be out in the public, out in open, like, I, you know. I sleep in front of the library where my son gets stolen. Why? Because I can't go to a park, a public park and relax in a grass during the day. I got a ticket for, uh, sleeping, for relaxing. Good, good days, relaxing. While we book, listen to music. People often point it up. Give me a ticket for sleeping, sheltering at a park. No, I'm relaxing. So my concern is, my problem is, why are we home people getting tickets and they have a rent for the city when we can't help it? It's not our fault that our, well, I don't know their, uh, situation, but my situation is I'm only here by force because of my family issues. So I'm here to support, I'm here to support myself, our community, doing good things for this community. But yeah, I get, not just me, but homeowners who get harassed. It's not right. So I'm here today on, on their behalf and my behalf as well. That's not right. That's a city harass home people or just leave me at a park. If that's the case, why don't they somehow get a bigger, a bigger, uh, shelter where they got housed? The ones that are trying to make a difference. The ones that are not trying to make a difference is actually more. But the ones that's willing to make a difference, they're out in the street getting tickets, nonstop.
Ben Warren, City of Adrian resident, I would like to reiterate that Ernest has done a ton for our community. Uh, during Pride, we were heckled and harassed for six and a half hours. And we had no ability to have these people leave. Um, you know, ordinance is far beyond the certainty. Um, and Ernest stepped up and spent the entire six hours keeping us safe, following these people around, taking their crap and making sure that we had a good time with the protect. No one asked him to. He just showed up and does the good work all the time. And it sucks seeing him sleep on a bench when we can have a ten million dollar fountain, like.
Hey, Ronos, as a resident, I also want to speak to some of the people around the community too. And he, he is exceptional, but also many homeless people do try to contribute. They do try to be helpful in the community. And literally just yesterday, Ernest, I will take down numerous tables and tents because the older individuals were having those tables and tents and needed help and, uh, negative. He then wears sorts of things, hearing, breathing, and other things, helping out again. He's not doing one. He's just one that we can see most because he's very helpful. But there are many others that are also trying to make a difference that are struggling with homelessness. And like I said before, and you started this policy, punishment isn't really the best way to deal with this, basically, not enough room. The shelters or housing and we know the prices are very ridiculous with a lot of rent. Oh, wow. We know that a lot is really, and so with all the shortages, those aren't the fault of the homeless individuals, but they're the ones who So I hope that we'll think about that policy in the future. And thank you.
Puffing key two five six, I'm everyone drives. I pay five hundred and fifty dollars a year. Um, take a sponge bath and a nice, um, V I P area of the Delta Sky Club. And you walk into the Sky Club and you get to lock the door, you get soaps, you get a washcloth. You have all the amenities and that comes with privilege. Unfortunately, um, that is the difference between privilege. And I get to take a shower in between my layover from one flight to the next. And Ernest has to struggle with where he has the opportunity to, um, meet his basic hygiene needs. I think, um, I look to the optimism of the strategic plan, uh, on, uh, having that conversation about, uh, working through the homeless issue and identifying some of the best practices in place to, uh, make sure that we're not moving into the area of harassment with our homeless, but remembering that they're people and individuals and that we need to honor or respect them. Um, as I've got to know, Ernest, as I've got to know Terry and the other individuals who are around town, they have a heart and we're, uh,
Hearing no more public comment. Is there any public comment on Zoom? If so, please state your name and address and you will also have a three-minute time limit. Hearing no public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned and our regular meeting will begin at seven P M out in the chambers. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, present. Commissioner Help?
Present.
Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Strayer?
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Present.
Commissioner Gauss? Absent. All commission members present with the exception of Commissioner Gauss. May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Gauss?
So move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Help?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Gauss approved by a six-zero roll call vote. May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move the adopt the consent agenda. Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Help with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please. Commissioner Help?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by a six-zero roll call vote. Moving on to our regular agenda, under special orders. This, the special order dash one is a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the closeout of the rental rehab grant that has been rescheduled to October second of two thousand and twenty-three. And now, under ordinances, we have ordinance number twenty-three dash zero zero seven, which is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance. To amend the City of Adrian zoning ordinance, article twenty-one, I dash two, general industrial district, section twenty-one point zero two, principal uses permitted. This is a first reading only. Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those? At this time, we will open it up to public comment. We will begin inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address. When we are finished inside the chambers, we will then open it up to Zoom participants.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Scola and I am from Anderson Development Company. And I appreciate the, uh, commission considering our request relating to the zoning change. Um, this specific zoning change relates to some opportunities that Anderson Development is looking at. And we've been working really closely, actually, with Chief Masking Gill and we've been in discussions with City Administrator Elliott on how can we both create jobs and also protect the community? And this particular, um, revision of the zoning ordinance allows for three levels of review. Basically, there would be a review by an independent contractor, an expert in the area that would look at, you know, what are the, the risks and how do we address them? Uh, Chief Masking Gill would be another review and then the planning commission would be the, uh, third reviewer and approver for this. So, we appreciate your consideration.
At this time, we will open up public comment to the Zoom participants. For the record, please state your name and address. And for the rec, you will see the, um, time limit on the screen. Hearing no public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
Yes, I'd like to thank, uh, our city administrator Greg Elliott, Madam Mayor, and our city attorney who's not here, along with Ellen Help, Commissioner Help, for having a great first Adrian Community Academy on Wednesday. Um, had very, very positive feedback from it. And, uh, this week's presentation is going to be done with Parks and Recreation Department had Jeremiah Davies here in the chamber and I look forward to another very educational time. So, thank you all.
Commissioner Castleberry?
I just, I wanted to, um, add another community event that happens, um, for people that are discussing what homelessness looks like in our community. Um, the Illinois County Continuum of Care is on, uh, the second Tuesday of the month. They start at three fifteen. It's in the Goodwill Building. Um, anyone that is concerned or cares about helping with homeless can join that group. Um, so i- if there's questions that need to be answered, that's where all the state and federal funding comes through. Um, so that's where we can, um, help find some answers, um, to help the, our citizens that are currently unsheltered.
Commissioner Help?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, what a great weekend for Adrian, uh, last weekend. Uh, the Maples, big win on Friday night over our, uh, Community to the North, twenty-nine to seven. That set off Friday night. And if, for you folks that have been dri- dri- that drove around town Saturday, I mean, it was wild. Adrian College is homecoming. Uh, Santa Heights home opener, the Maples played soccer Saturday, and then also our delicious. Uh, you know, when I was down there for our delicious, I, uh, I seen the traffic. It was, it was awesome. I stopped by Commissioner Strayer's booth and then, you know, and, and to his benefit, I couldn't talk long because he was making sales. So, um, I hope all the vendors had a really, really good turnout and, and, and made lots of money. But again, uh, it was awesome Saturday. I mean, there was so much activity going on in the city and, and so many people that came from far away and and, uh, I hope everybody had a great time and, uh, I just wanted to point that out.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.